We will now call the meeting to order. If we could please pay attention to Councilmember Emerson for the invocation to be followed by the pledge of allegiance. If you could please rise if you're able.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to introduce for tonight's prayer Parker Arnold. Parker is an occupational therapy assistant for 501, but this past year she actually voluntarily took 10-hour cut in pay and she volunteers 10 hours a week now over Highland Park High School in their mentoring program. And although she may deny this to her death, Parker's also my niece. So take it away, Parker.
All right. Would you bow your heads and close your eyes for me? Father, thank you for these people in this room. We just invite you and your Holy Spirit to come to this place to anoint the words that are said and the decisions that are made. We thank you for the people that you've given leadership roles to in our city. We just ask that you would give them clear vision for the right steps to take for our city, that there would be no doubt about what steps they want to take. Father, that it would be for the betterment of the city and for the people here, people from all communities, all ethnicities and genders. Father, we ask that you would come and anoint their decisions. And it's in your name that we pray. Thank you.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have the awkward walk while we get our proclamations here in tune. So if our good friends that are here to celebrate Constitution Week would please
So we have a proclamation that states that whereas September 17th marks the 230th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and the patriotic celebration that it will commemorate the occasion, therefore I, Michelle de la Isla, Mayor of the City of Topeka, Kansas, do hereby proclaim September 17th to the 23rd, the Week of Constitution Week. If you could say a few words.
Okay, thank you. I'm Tanya Judd, and I'm representing the Topeka Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution tonight. And we are pleased and encouraged through our promotion of helping and understanding of the importance of this Constitution, and we appreciate your letting us come tonight and your taking part in this with us. We just feel it's so important to keep this in the forefront. And sometimes it slips a little bit, so this is very important. And thank you so much for doing this for us tonight.
Thank you very much. And let us remember our Constitution.
Thank you.
So I would invite all of us to rise and hold a moment of silence as we remember 9/11, the individuals that gave their life in rescuing others, and the fact that our country still stands strong. We now proceed with the roll call.
Mayor De La Isla?
Here. Oh, we have a presentation? Pardon me. So we have a presentation. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, Monique Lade will be doing a presentation on the Gen to Gen Encore Prize, or the Encore's Gen to Gen Prizes, it's actually labeled. So, Monique, if you'll come forward, please.
Greetings, Mayor De La Isla, Governing Body, City Manager. In June, the City of Topeka applied for the Encore Gen to Gen Prize. We are proud to announce that we were informed a few weeks ago that Topeka is one of 25 semifinalists out of 110 applicants for the Encore Gen to Gen Prize for $50,000. Semifinalists must go through a public voting period. The organization with the most votes is automatically awarded $10,000 and has a chance for the grand prize. The top five finalists will pitch their program to the Encore Conference in Los Angeles in November, and the winner will receive $50,000 for their program. The City of Topeka is always seeking opportunities to strengthen our partnership with USC 501, and it was a natural fit to partner with them for this program. Part of the application was a three-minute video introducing the Common Unity Program, and I'd like to share that with you at this time.
Community will be an intergenerational life transformation experience for 50-plus neighbors and high school seniors at Highland Park High School.
I'm an educator because I was voluntold to be in a program when I was a junior in high school. And I was going to partner with students who could relate to me because they look like me, to remember the adults that made a significant impact on my life and made deposits into my socio-emotional bank account whenever I was a young person. And I knew that if ever asked, I would want an adult to think back to me. And so that was the reason I became an educator.
As a former graduate of Highland Park High School, I've personally witnessed some of the hardships that students have to go through, seeing them become victims of gun violence due to the lifestyle that they're leading because they have no mentors or guidance on what the next step is or how to live a different lifestyle. I feel like that if this program had been around at Highland Park when I was there, it would have really benefited and helped a lot of students.
The program will afford our seasoned neighbors an opportunity to be advisors to high school seniors. Professional advisors over age 50 will soar into the lives of the youth by sharing their talents and expertise with the next generation of community leaders.
If you're not born into money, if you're not born into a family that has privilege, then the only way you're going to get it is through education. When I grew up, everybody played basketball or football, then too many people played baseball, then too many people played tennis. They said, "Well, why is that?" I said, "Well, when you look at baseball, you know, you got to have your own bat, you got to have your own ball, you got to have your own glove." "Well, you can buy that." He just said, "You can buy that." I'm like, "No, you don't understand." You know, sometime a mother has four kids, and she got $20, and she got to feed them for the whole week. But basketball? How many people can play with one basketball? 10. So those are kind of sports that we could get around because you only needed one ball.
I believe that the adults who are going to participate in this experience are going to bridge that gap. They're going to want to be that person in our students' lives that they think of that made a positive contribution.
The reason why I would like to participate in the program is I grew up in public housing, and my parents were more concerned with making sure we had something to eat, ruff over your head, clothes on your back. That's why I think this program would be beneficial to me because I'll be able to help somebody else that was looking at the same things I was looking at, but they would have somebody there.
Community will change and impact lives forever, and we will be able to see some of those immediately, some in years to come, but we are pretty assured that this will be a generational change.
At Booking.com, we can't guarantee you'll find gold on your Wild West vacation.
That's all right. So what is Common Unity? The Common Unity proposal is a pilot program that will provide an avenue to soar into the lives of our future community leaders. It will pair 25 students at Highland Park High School with mentors over the age of 50. Please keep in mind that if we win the prize and the program is successful, and if we secure additional funding, it will expand to more USC 501 high schools. Mentors will complete an application and background check. In addition, they'll receive specialized mentor training. These mentors will help the mentees with college applications and applying for scholarships and financial aid. The mentees and mentors will create and implement a community service project. Other services will be provided as deemed necessary. Prize money will be used for monthly financial literacy courses, ACT prep courses, visits to local and in-state technical schools, colleges, and universities, college application fees, and group activities to ensure that both the mentees and mentors have a little fun. We need your help. Public voting takes place starting tomorrow, Wednesday, September 12th through Tuesday, September 25th. We're asking that you visit the Common Unity profile page, which is shown here, where everyone can vote once a day during the entire voting period. The City of Topeka and USC 501 will be leading a collaborative media and get-out-to-vote campaign about the Common Unity Program. Our plan is as follows: We'll saturate the social media outlets, participate in TV and radio interviews. USC 501 will encourage all students and parents to vote, and we'll be asking all of our Topeka neighbors to vote as well. Allow me to acknowledge and say thank you to Dr. Anderson from USC 501 Superintendent, Dr. Perry, Highland Park High School Principal, the class of 2019, some of the students are there at this this evening, and our community partners who joined us in support of the program. Thank you, and I stand before you welcoming any questions.
Thank you, Monique, for your presentation. Do we have any questions in the body? Councilman Emerson.
I do not have any que-- well, one question, one clarification. You can vote once a day online, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you for that. I just wanted to thank you, you know, I graduated from Highland Park, and as Ms. Ortiz often says, it's great to be a Scot. Take a high girl there. But, you know, I just so thank you for putting this together, and I don't know if people really realize what we've done here. So there's only 25 semifinalists nationwide, and if you look at the website, the other schools are New York, New York, Palo Alto, California, I mean, there's like Indianapolis, but it seems like we're by far like the smallest, you know, city involved, and I just, my hat's off to you, that video is fantastic.
Well, Councilmember, thank you. There's no I in team, and there's a phenomenal community team, so we appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Councilmember Hillard and Councilmember Ortiz.
Speaking of the team, I know we've got a number of people here with the project. I would love to see them stand and be recognized.
If you please could all rise, those of you that are associated with the project, so that we could recognize you. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Monique, I know you're a Trojan like me, but when you see a good thing, we have to get on board. So I will be voting to get on board, okay? And it's... Hoi hoi, Mike.
Anybody else? Well, I just want to say thank you for your leadership, Monique. Ever since I've known you, you're always trying to figure out ways of helping children in our community. It was first with your initiative of getting children to read a certain number of hours by the time that they were in kindergarten and being involved in our community. I also see Melissa Masoner here, and if anybody does not know who Melissa Masoner is, Melissa, please stand up. Melissa is the number-one advocate for youth and adult partnerships in our community. One of the things that she knows that we are working on is on establishing a council of young people in the City of Topeka that is actually going to meet and have a regular agenda, and so we're doing a lot of great things with our youth. We want you all to stay in your city. Thank you for what you're doing, and we may be small, but we're mighty. So we're going for the win. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Governing Body.
If there's no other presentations, I think that now we proceed with the roll call.
Mayor De La Isla?
Present.
Councilmembers Hillard?
Here.
Claire?
Here.
Ortiz?
Here.
Emerson?
Here.
Padilla?
Here.
Jensen?
In the words of the mayor, I'm present.
Mays?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Endless?
Here.
Now we will proceed with appointments. If the clerk would read.
A is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Bill Nigher to the Board of Mechanical Examiners for a term ending September 12, 2020. And B is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Tony Beck to the Topeka Board of Zoning Appeals to fill an unexpired term ending November 2, 2021.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Councilmember Mays. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Cohen. The mayor does not vote. If there is no comments or questions, we proceed with the votes.
Do we have nine yes?
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. Could the individuals that are here please stand up so that they could be recognized for their appointments? Thank you so much for your service. And your mayor finally realized that she was going off the preliminary agenda, and that's why she was so lost. We now proceed to the consent agenda.
A are minutes of the regular reading of September 4, 2018, and there are no applications.
What is the pleasure of the body? We have a motion by Councilwoman Ortiz. We have a second by the deputy mayor. Are there any comments or questions with regards to the consent agenda? Seeing none, we proceed with the votes.
Mr. Padilla. We have 10 yes.
Ten having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to action items. Line item six. Action item A, if the clerk would read.
A is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, amending the district map referred to made a part of the zoning ordinances by Section 1850-050 of the Topeka Municipal Code, by providing for certain changes in zoning on property located at 304 and 308 Southwest Van Buren Street from O-N-I to Office and Institutional District to D-1 Downtown District.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Governing Body, tonight Bill Feinder will cover the first of two zoning change requests for you tonight. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, City Council and your honor. We have two zoning cases before you tonight. Pretty exciting in our book. Both involve downtown, both involve new housing. The first one comes as a really, again, these are both very neat projects, comes as a historic preservation project, Third and Van Buren. This is the old St. Joseph's Catholic School and convent. Both are part of rezoning. We have a buyer, Mr. Mark Bernheide, who has done similar projects downtown with residential lofts, wants to do a similar project here. 11 loft units. The current zoning does not allow for that, so that's why this is before you. So the new zoning would not only accommodate new loft units, but also potential commercial in the convent, in the convent building to the south of the school. No real issues that we analyzed or that came up during this process. We are actually very thankful. There were several proposals that came to us before we got to this point that could have done away with the school. So I think it is the applicant's intent to put this on the historic register for the state and national register, and so everything will be preserved and restored to its original grandeur. The inside, I will say, it was built in 1927. It was last used as a school in the '70s. It's been vacant for 10 years. It is actually in extremely good shape, and really applaud the diocese for taking care of it like that. So this is, we find no issues with this, and Planning Commission and staff both recommend
Do we, Councilwoman Ortiz?
I'll move to approve for discussion.
Okay, so before we go into any moving, this is one of those items in which I will read the consent of the council, and then we'll just go around just ensuring that nobody has taken into ex parte communication that precludes you from making a decision. Prior to proceeding with the vote, each board member of the governing body who has engaged in ex parte communication with any individual, either in favor or against the matter being considered, must state that this communication has occurred and indicate that even in light of having engaged in this conversation, you're able to fairly, objectively, and impartially consider the measure based upon the evidence provided on the record. The record includes the Planning Commission minutes, the staff report and its attachments, the public comments made during the Planning Commission hearing, and similar relevant information related to the matter. The declaration is required due to the fact that the governing body is acting in a quasi-judicial role in making this decision and must demonstrate the appropriate process has been afforded. Councilwoman Hiller?
I talked to Mark Bernheide very, right after we bought the building some time ago now. That's it.
None. None to my recollection.
None other than the record?
No contacts.
No contacts.
None that I'm aware of.
None?
None.
None.
Now that we have the ex parte communication piece taken care of, we have a motion for discussion. We have a second by Councilwoman Hiller. Discussion.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Bill, is there a building next to that that's part of that?
Uh...
Is that what the other address is?
Correct.
So this, I'm sorry, this is the view from Third Street, right?
That's correct. So this is looking, this view is looking south, and so on the other side of the building is a, I think it's a one-story, maybe two-story, sorry, it's a lower-level building than this. That's the convent building.
Is that a part of this?
It is part of the rezoning. It is attached in a way, through a passageway, yes.
So will they be renovating that? And if so, is that part of the, I mean, what are they going to do with it?
That is to be decided. The first phase of this will be the school, as you see here, and then the convent building that's attached to it will be, there are no immediate plans to do something with that, but the zoning allows them to do residential or commercial, not, which the zoning doesn't allow for right now. So no immediate plans.
So what's zoned there now is, are commercial?
It's zoned for office.
Oh, office?
Yes.
And that was the old Let's Help Building as well?
Uh, yes.
A long time ago. Is that why it's zoned office, or do you know?
I believe so.
Because they were there forever.
It has, yeah, it's been there for a while.
Thank you.
If there's general comments or questions from the body? Seeing none? Oh, Councilwoman Hiller?
I'll make just one. This is really, really exciting. When I first lived in Topeka, I lived practically, I lived across the street on this block. And the St. Joseph's neighborhood is really wonderful, the church. If you've not been inside the church ever, or certainly before they've renovated it, need to go. It's comparable to the great churches in Europe, and it's this neighborhood and St. Joseph's are such a treasure that most people in Topeka are not aware of, and this, Mark has done such a great job with conversions with Assumption School before, and I have great confidence in his work, but things are starting to come alive here at the North End, and it's very exciting. So that's all. I will support it, of course.
Of course. Well, we now proceed with the voting.
We have 10 yes.
Ten having voted yes, the motion passes. We now proceed to item B of the action items. If the clerk would read.
B is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, amending the district map referred to made a part of the zoning ordinances by Section 1850-050 of the Topeka Municipal Code, by providing for certain changes in zoning of properties located at or near the intersection, southwest corner of the intersection of Southwest Sixth Avenue and Southwest Topeka Boulevard, from D-1 Downtown District to C-4 Commercial District and O-N-I to Office and Institutional District to PUD Plan Unit Development.
Also known as Part Two of the Bill Show. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Bill Feinder, Planning Director, will go through the second zoning request, which this one's from Pioneer Midtown Homes. Bill?
Thank you again. Again, a similar theme, if you've noticed, this is another proposal at the corner of Sixth and Topeka Boulevard that will restore a, what is now a historic building listed on the state register of historic places, the old Casson Building. The Casson Building was the former or original offices for Blue Cross Blue Shield back in, I think it was built in 1920, 27. Over time, it was never used for residential. This has always been office. Actually, there is one unit at the top of the building that is kind of a penthouse nature. But the, being on the historic register now, the whole thing is being converted to residential, so about 23 units. The ground floor, the storefronts that you see, here, let's go to today's view, the storefronts that you see there, because it's historic, listed, will not change, but it will at least keep that option for the future to have some ground-level retail or non-residential use. But that will all be residential use in this proposal. Also part of this is a, two new buildings that would come behind the Casson Building. One would be facing Sixth, one would be facing Tyler. One would have 10 units, the other would have eight units, so if you're counting. It's a total of 41 units, along with the first proposal, first rezoning that you just passed. It's 52 units for downtown housing inventory, which is very exciting. This particular proposal will be affordable housing, so all 41 units will be for low, moderate-income households, and they're all one-bedroom. The issue that we dealt with here mostly was just trying to deal with the parking. All the parking is, and this is good, all the parking is behind the building, off the alleys. There is one space per every unit, and because of the nature of the occupants, the size of the apartments being one-bedroom, there will be, and the proximity to downtown and other, and bus lines and uses, there is not a requirement, we lower the requirement for parking, so we didn't have to tear down any more buildings and put any more asphalt down over what's behind the buildings there now. So that worked out well for the character of the neighborhood to keep it that way. The design is kind of mirroring the Casson Building, which has a flat roof, with prominent windows facing the street, closer to the street. So we feel like this fits very well with what's around there. Technically, this is part of the old, historic Old Town neighborhood, although we said it's downtown. Definitely between the renovation of the Casson and these two infill buildings definitely is consistent with the density proposals in the Old Town neighborhood plan as well as our lug dump as well. So Planning Commission and staff both recommended unanimous approval on that. I'll stand for any questions.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Feinder? Seeing that there's no questions for Mr. Feinder, I do have to remind all of us that the same language that I read earlier applies. So we'll go around to see if there has been any ex parte communication that would hinder your ability to make an impartial decision. Councilwoman Hiller?
This is part of a co-development with the Van Buren Project. With that, I was contacted by the developers early on in terms of this project. There has been a public neighborhood hearing, and I did attend that. Other than that, no.
None.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
None to my recollection.
None other than the record?
No contacts?
None.
None that I recall?
None.
Also, none.
None.
Now that we have this closed, any communication? Is there a vote or discussion? I mean, a motion? Deputy Mayor?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by the deputy mayor to approve. We have a second by Councilwoman Hiller. If there's any discussion, Councilwoman Hiller?
I wanted to make a point on this one again. Again, we have a... Again, we have a local, seasoned, and very successful developer. I'm really proud of that, really proud of the work that Pioneer has done before, and it's exciting to see it here. Part of the discussion, and there was some question and answer, this quote, "Affordable housing" is because pretty much anybody who's doing multifamily is using tax credits. We are really excited that with all the growth downtown in offices, as well as businesses, as well as entertainment and restaurants, that this will be wonderful worker housing for people who are working, single people who are working in the downtown area. And we're, we're very excited about that potential. It's gonna be a need, as we need more people that can just get there. Thank you.
Councilwoman Emerson?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Feiner, I just wanted to compliment you and your staff. Going in, different communities, working on developments and things, oftentimes there are these rigid rules that are applied without, even if they don't make sense for an area. So I really appreciate you guys getting creative and working that out. That's, I think that's a great compromise.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Seeing none, we proceed with the voting.
We have ten yes.
Ten having voting yes, the motion passes. We now move to item C of the action items. If the clerk would read.
C is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, imposing a real estate lien pursuant to KSA 12-808C upon certain lots and pieces of ground in Shawnee County, Kansas, to pay the cost for utility services where such payments to the city have not been made due to neglect, value, or refusal to pay.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we look to approve an ordinance related to placing lien upon real estate on a number of lots. There were 10 people that were on the original list that made payments, and so their names have come off. There is a new list that was put on the table for you. And so anyways, just make sure that you look through the list. There are 10 that are no longer there. With that, I'll ask Braxton to come forward and make comments regarding this ordinance.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, governing body. As many of you that are, have been on the council for a while know, this is an annual exercise that we do, assessing liens against the real property taxes for outstanding utility bills. The majority of these are out-of-city customers that are getting wastewater services from the city of Topeka. We don't have the ability to shut off or disconnect water service, which is our primary means of enforcing payment located within the city. On the ones in the city that we're doing assessment, they basically fall into two categories. 10 of those are fire line customers, and the fire chief will be very happy to hear that I don't go and disconnect fire lines for people that haven't made the payment because of the issue with life safety. The others are accounts that have stormwater only, and we don't have the ability, if they don't have a water service, we don't have that means. Last year, we assessed about $115,000. The initial ordinance that came out, that was posted on the agenda, was $111,000. As City Manager mentioned, we have had, I believe it was actually 12 people who've made payment, for a total of about $5,000. For members of the public that are viewing this, and constituents that may have questions to use, up until October 1st, we will accept payment at the call center 368-3111. If they make the payment before that date, we will remove them from the list, and they will not be assessed. State law permits us to do the assessment. I will tell you that it is a extremely effective means. We typically see about 98% of what's assessed that we collect. If we just assign it to our third-party debt collector, we're closer to about 30% because we get a percentage of what they actually collect. So if you have someone who's judgment-proof, they can't collect, we don't get anything. And with that, I will gladly stand for any questions that you have, and, and thank you for the action. I know this is never a fun thing to assess, but from my perspective, to be fair to our other customers that pay, we absolutely need to do everything that we can to collect these funds so that we reduce the burden on the customers that pay.
Councilman Emerson?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Kopley, you know, seeing, seeing the, the names on here and the amounts owed, most of these seem like they are months and months. You know, some of these are residential addresses, as we know from the map. And it's only on a yearly basis we can do that, is that correct?
We could pass an ordinance more frequently. However, the county only assesses on the real estate once a year. So it would, you know, there may be one or two people out in the county that we might catch, who might move, that we would have, that we would have assessed. But since the actual assessment doesn't take place until the end of the year, it really, it seems to me a, an exercise in futility to come back in front of you guys more frequently to do this when county only assesses it one time.
Sure, okay, thank you for that. Also, is there, actually, I was late this, this month paying my water bill, and I actually don't know what happened, but I did send it in now.
It's off.
It's, it might be. But I know like Westcar, there's a thing on there, if you don't pay by X date, it's, you know, pretty good percentage more if you miss the due date. Do we do that with water? And, and do these, I guess my bigger question would be then, some of these people who owe probably six or nine months of residential bills, are we getting interest or something from them, or penalties or something?
I, I will have to look into that. I do not believe that we charge penalty and interest currently on our, on our water bills. The, there is a, if we have to roll, do a truck roll for a shut-off, there's a fee that we charge for that. If we have to do a truck roll to turn them back on, the same day, there's an additional charge for that. But at this point, I do not believe that we charge interest or penalties.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Hi, Braxton. I appreciate you giving me that number, 'cause I see three people I'll be calling after I get out of here. And I'd like to commend Councilwoman Heller. We did that last year, and I see there's some apartment buildings that are not on here. And so if you guys know people, give them a call. I mean, this is ridiculous. I, mine would be shut off too, over $100. I mean, and how did they get this high? Anyway, what about the, there's, there's somebody on here that's been on here, ever since I've been on here. What, what are we doing about that? I mean, do it, are, are we not charging interest on him year after year? Are we not going after that person?
Well...
And it's probably property. I think that's what I was told before.
There are, there are a number of these that relate to KDL Enterprises and...
Yeah, and what is that?
Those are all commercial properties, as you are probably all aware from newspaper accounts, that has been tied up in bankruptcy for quite some time. One of, the big one that you see for $23,000...
Right.
That's White Lake Mall. That's obviously vacant, been vacant, but we still have fire lines going to that, to that property. And stormwater, that's what comes up to that $23,000.
Okay.
And it's, it, it's as frustrating for us as it is for you, councilmember.
But the person, and I will get with you, that's been on here year after year after year, and you can research that, is doing nothing, and I think it's property. So we've gotta look at something else to, this list has dwindled down. It's not as bad as it used to be. Actually, I was looking for more pages. But to help, to help, to help you. And, and I know the last time, I'll ask this, and you don't have to get back with me now, but the last time there was apartment building, and that was apartment building that I called over and over and over till I got through to them. And they were, they had the, the, the tenants were paying their water, but we weren't shutting them off because they were half of their payment. Did we ever rectify that? So like, if they're not paying, and even though they pay their landlord, that we're cutting them off now?
Yes, ma'am, we have made a change in policy. And we work absolutely hand-in-hand with our resources in neighborhood relations to let them know in advance if we're going to do a shut-off on those properties, so that they have, they're ready and able with referrals and other resources. And it is extremely unjust that these people pay their rent on time, and that the landlord fails to pay utility bill. And so we have several times this year done, done shut-offs, and I will say that it has been effective. After we shut that off, the tenants get on the landlord...
Yeah.
And I think we've always received payment on the same day.
Great, 'cause I know that was almost $50,000, that amount, and that was just ridiculous that we do that. We don't do that for anybody. Thank you, Braxton. Keep up the great work.
Additional questions or comments for Councilwoman Heller?
Could you repeat the deadline? I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
October?
Payments that we receive before October 1st...
First, okay.
That we will remove them from the list, and we will not certify that to the county clerk for the tax assessment.
Thank you.
368-3111 is the call center.
Do they need to say anything special, Councilwoman?
Yes, Councilwoman Ortiz?
Do they need to say anything special, or just tell them they were on the list, or?
They can tell them on the list, but our, we'll identify their name and address, and we'll locate the account.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Seeing no additional comments or questions, I think that at this point, we proceed with the votes.
They're not on there.
Oh, there was, there was no motion? I thought, we have a motion by Councilwoman Ortiz. We have a second by Councilman Emerson. Seeing no additional comments or questions, we now proceed with the vote.
We have ten yes.
Ten having voting yes, the motion passes. We have a need to recess into executive session prior to this next item. If the clerk would read the parameters.
The motion is to recess into executive session for a period of time not to exceed 20 minutes for consultation with the city's legal counsel to discuss attorney-client privileged matters related to contract negotiations as justified by KSA 75-4319B2. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present: Members of the governing body, City Manager Brent Trout, Deputy City Manager Doug Gerber, Police Chief Bill Cochran, Administrative and Financial Services Director Nikki Lee, Human Resources Director Jackie Russell, Senior Assistant City Attorney Catherine Walter, and myself. When the open meeting resumes, the governing body will be taking action on Agenda Item 5D.
We have heard the parameters. What is the pleasure of the body? Deputy Mayor?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Deputy Mayor.
Second.
We have a second by Councilmember Cohen. Councilwoman Heller?
I'm not sure, I don't even know if we've talked about how much time, but we have just one person on the agenda for public comment, and I think some people with that individual, and I was wondering, we, we talked a couple months ago about being a little more flexible with the agenda, whether they could go first. It's just a suggestion.
The, the sign-up is not for this item?
No, it's not. It would be to allow the, the public heart of public comment to occur before we do this item.
We will do it at the end, like we have done in the past. We now proceed with the vote?
We have ten yes.
Ten having voting yes, the motion passes. We will vacate the room, and the executive session will not exceed 20 minutes. We have come out of executive session, but we need to return to executive session for a period not to exceed 15 minutes with the same parameters that were presented in the, in the initial motion. Do we have a motion to continue? Deputy Mayor makes a motion to continue not to exceed 15 minutes. We have a second by Councilmember Cohen. We now raise our hands to, with the vote. Vote is unanimous, we reengage in executive session.
Can't leave for a minute.
We are in need of resuming the executive session for initial, not to exceed 10 minutes. Do I have a motion to do so, under the same parameters?
Please.
We have a motion by Councilmember Emerson, we have a second by the deputy mayor. All of those in favor to extend for 10 addition, not to exceed 10 minutes, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Oh, motion passes. Nine to one. no action being taken. Once everybody fills the rooms, we will proceed with our regular agenda. We now proceed with item B, if the clerk would read.
Okay, hold on just a second.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. Okay. D is approval of a three-year labor agreement between the City of Topeka and the Fraternal Order of Police Lodges, number three.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Governing body, you have before you consideration of the contract between the Fraternal Order of Police Lodges, number three, in the city of Topeka.
All right. Councilman Padilla?
Well, considering all the discussion in that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract.
We have a motion for approval of the contract. We have a second by the deputy mayor. I know that we've had robust discussion. Is there any additional discussion or comments? Councilwoman Heller?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to look out into the room. Obviously, we had some serious discussion and some serious angst. Without going into any details, this is a pretty robust contract that we want to give you. We need your help to keep the lid on the budget and to, to work in an excellent manner through these three years, and we know we'll get it. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other comments, we proceed with the voting.
We have ten yes.
Ten having voting yes, the motion passes. This completes all of the action items in the agenda. We do, we will now proceed with announcements. City Manager?
Go ahead.
The September 18th agenda, we have one to board quickly for the Topeka Planning Commission. On the consent agenda, we'll have an expenditure ordinance and a special event resolution for iron rail brand opening. On the action items, we'll have approval of real estate report and method of disposal for property located at 421 Southwest Tontoon Street. Both, two ordinances relating to the IPMC, the International Property Maintenance Code amendments, and then we have a resolution for initiation of eminent domain proceedings for a property located around Norwood Booster Pump Station. And then not action items, we have a discussion item for the 2017 National Electric, Electrical Code, and then on the Parking on Untapped Services ordinance.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of announcements from me. I want to recognize Topeka Fire Department. They helped again to lift Sunda to her feet, to keep her going, and so we're going to recognize that excellent effort. Reminder to take a look at voting for the encore prize that starts tomorrow. The last item I have is an exciting day that's coming, September 21st, and that is Clean Slate Day. Judge Lori Doherty-Bissell has done an excellent job of organizing this upcoming Clean Slate Day. A couple of the things, there are lists that has been created on things that can be done, looking at arrest warrants, payment plans, payment options for issues, expungements, getting free legal advice, looking at the driver's license, looking at employment opportunities, housing availability, finance, education, other city services, food resources, civil service needs. They need to make sure and bring their driver's license or government-issued photo ID, any information, documents they have about TMC offenses, proof of their household income, and their social security card in order for us to help them best. So there'll be a lot of folks volunteering. We've had some financial support that's been donated, and we're excited about today. It'll be a good day, help a lot of people out.
All right. Well, I want to say thank you to all of the individuals that sent their prayers and their remarks. I obviously was not here last week, and I want to thank everybody that respected my privacy. I was in the hospital for eight days at Stormont Vale, and I am doing much better now. Long story short, I like to run outside. I got bit by a tick. The cure for Lyme's disease is very strong antibiotics, which, by the way, they did the trick, because when they pulled my... because when they pulled my cerebral spinal fluid, there was nothing. However, one of the side effects of very strong antibiotics is inflammation in the brain. They had to do a spinal tap, and in addition to a spinal tap, they had to do two blood patches because my body is so wonderful that the first one didn't take. So I am very happy to be out of the hospital. But I do want to say thank you to the nurses. The care that I received at Stormont Vale was absolutely phenomenal. And mind you, I did not go, I don't make the habit of going and announcing who I am. It's kind of fun to know that not a lot of people watch this on Tuesday nights. And just, just see how people, just in their regular demeanor, take care of patients. The nursing staff over there is wonderful. I had Kim, one of the nurses, who had gone through the same thing that I had gone through, was advocating for me. I had Jessica, who went all the way down to the procedure room with me because by the second time, I was pretty scared. Having somebody poke in your spine three times is not a fun thing. Dr. Seti, the neurologist, was phenomenal. Dr. Mule, who's a new hospitalist, and Dr. Cuevas. I mean, the staff over there was absolutely outstanding. And it makes me very proud to have this hospital in the City of Topeka and the excellent employees that represent it. So, Councilwoman Emerson.
Nothing that I may add.
Councilwoman Padilla.
Just quickly to remind everybody, this weekend, I have an event at T-PAC. We have supported them through the council, and I want to promote whatever opportunities that they have there. And they're having tequilas and tacos. And they're having a mariachi band that is internationally recognized. So if you have the opportunity to go, I think you'll enjoy that. And again, I want to recognize all the efforts of firefighters, emergency personnel, law enforcement, and ordinary citizens who helped those people who were put in danger and harmed on 9/11. I went to visit New York City here about three weeks ago, and that had to be the most solemn place I visited while I was there. So want to remember them, and in remembering them, remind everybody, we have an election coming up. If you're not registered, get registered. If you know people who are registered who don't vote, get them to the polling sites. We need to get everyone out to vote. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to wish all of our friends on the East Coast good luck. As many as you know, they are fixing to get pounded by one of the most powerful storms that has hit our country in recent history. And I just want everyone out there to know that my thoughts and prayers, at the very least, are with you all. Good luck.
Councilwoman Mayes. Councilwoman Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to tell you that council, that, you know, this is a pretty thankless job sometimes. And the last couple weeks, I've received a whole lot of positive emails, especially to the streets, the street ceiling projects that are doing these long, long stretches. And people are saying, "You're fixing the streets. You're finally fixing the streets." And so I just wanted to pass that on. Good job, Mr. City Manager. And then I'd like to invite everybody over to the West Side tomorrow, 5 o'clock. The new McDonald's is going to open up. Yeah, we'll be there, right? Yeah. Ribbon cutting at 5 o'clock. So we'll see you there. Thanks.
Councilwoman Lesser. Councilwoman Keller.
Just a couple quick things. First, a shout-out to the Tennessee Town NIA, who on night out won the Stuff the Bus contest, as it turns out, with 137 people on the city bus. So way to go. Also, I got through, through Facebook messaging, a message from a visitor to Topeka that I thought was worth sharing on the Topeka Bike Ways website, just as a clue. This is an out-of-town visitor. "Yeah, we were blown away by the bike trail system. Asheville claims to be progressive and environmentally friendly town, but the pedestrian and cycling infrastructure is seriously lacking. Topeka really is an awesome town."
Yeah.
There you go. Speaking of nice, nice comments coming in, it was great. Also, I've heard good reports. A number of people from District 1 attended Neighborhood University last Saturday, and that really is meaningful to the neighborhoods. I don't know, maybe Sasha and Monique are gone, but that's, that's been a really great boon for neighborhoods. And last but not least, in terms of 911, people know where I live. I live right in the middle of town, close to the hospitals. And so I hear the sirens all the time. And for me, those are, they never bother me. They are signs of comfort that the city is alive and that people are being taken care of. And I do appreciate that, and especially on a day like today.
Councilwoman Claire.
Well, I'll start from, I did have family in North Carolina, and I have, or South Carolina, and I invited them, invited them to come up here. Ducks, five, four. We need three more ducks to meet, to, to have purchased 50, our goal. Three more ducks. So we had a lot of ducks sold in the last two weeks. It's on the 15. And now at Lake Shawnee, and it will be awesome.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you. I was wondering if I can get a flyer for the Clean Slate Day sent to me? I think that's important because I get a lot of questions on what of the rules and regulations. And I think that'd be nice to just start sending it to Liz and have her send it out to the council. I don't think we communicate with the public enough. October is almost here, and it's my favorite month. And it's because it's firefighter awareness month. And I haven't been talking about the smoke alarms, but I will get back on it in October. And last but not least, to the mayor, I want to give you this certificate, Walmart certificate.
Yes.
And it's.
Project Puerto Rico.
Project, can I, can I speak, ma'am? It's just online. It's, it's from the council members for Project Puerto Rico. And so if you could pass that on, that, that would be great. And I want to thank all the members that chipped in because our kids are our future for tomorrow. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Ortiz, before we go to the public comments, I want to tell you that as part of my whole getting the house ready and with alarm systems and everything, I also purchased alarm, new alarm things that are connected to the alarm system that will contact the police now and the fire in case of being an emergency. So I thought of you when I did that. Yes, you may respond.
Did the firefighters come out and put it up and check?
They will put them up. I'm not putting them up.
So you didn't think of me because I specifically said you have to fill out that sheet. And, and you have to have them come out. So when they do that, then give me cookies. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And then to Mayor Steve Benjamin, the fearless leader of the U.S. Conference of Mayors, who is the mayor of Columbia in South Carolina. My prayers are with you, and all of us have your back, anything that you need. Public comment, the one person signed up to speak is Mr. Kurt Cuda.
All right, good evening.
Thank you for waiting.
All right, no problem. And appreciate the sentiment, but most certainly stick with the agenda. Again, my name is Kurt Cuda. Tonight, I'm here on behalf of Momentum 2022. I'm the chair of the Quality of Place Work Group that is tasked with the implementation for part of that plan. And I also served on the steering committee with many people in this room and elsewhere. Over the course of the development of the plan and now the implementation of the plan, it's become very, very clear that quality of place is an integral part of economic development. Late last year, an idea was floated that maybe some of the carryover funds held by GoToPica and JADO could potentially be used to fund some quality-of-place initiatives in our community to make our community better. This initial idea sparked several follow-up discussions amongst several groups. And it ended up landing firmly with JADO in May, at their, at their May meeting. At that meeting, JADO adopted via resolution several criteria that would be applied to potential projects that could then receive this potential funding for their quality-of-place initiatives. The intent of this funding would be to only fund a portion of either the project itself or its operation. Tonight, I'm here, I guess, to provide that, an announcement of sorts on where we're at with that process and to get this effort going. I presented yesterday to the county commissioners, and I'll present again tomorrow night at JADO. And so we're going to cover everybody, kind of close the circle, not only for the elected officials and all of you that are serving and given of your time, but also the people tuning in to those various meetings. So I should have this presentation down by then. Okay, so the announcement of sorts is that people that are interested in getting their projects applied for these potential funds can start applying this week. Information can be found on the GoToPica website under the Momentum 2022 tab. It goes through how this project would work. Also included on that page is the resolution so they can go through what that criteria is. And to apply, it's going to be a simple overview on how their project fits that criteria. And then you would submit that to the Greater Topeka Partnership in general, or Molly Howie in specific, with those, with their overview of their projects. The deadline for getting those in is October 8th. After that, the Greater Topeka Partnership staff will filter those applications to make sure that they meet most, if not all, the criteria. And then from there, it'll go on to the next step. And that's where I'm going to stop, just for a second. After the May meeting, it was then decided that a private citizen panel should also help with this process to help go through the recommendation and the screening of the potential projects. It was then further decided that it should be staffed by the Quality of Place Work Group. And so I guess this is another testament to where if you get up and volunteer and talk to people, you end up getting volunteered yourself. So what we decided from there was, was how do we choose? Because we got, we got a group of about 20, and we thought that we better make sure that there's no conflicts of interest. So we decided that there would be no city employees, no county employees, no government employees, no Greater Topeka Partnership staff, and other than myself, no GoToPica board members. And so we're, we have about seven people that kind of fit all that criteria. It's a pretty diverse group. I'm waiting for a final confirm from one of the individuals, and we'll give those names tomorrow night at JADO. And so what that group will do is, after staff does the filtering, we will start around the week of October's 22nd and review that overview, do interviews with those projects, and then we will provide a recommendation then to the GoToPica Board during their, during their meetings in November and December. And the target for the pathway is then to get those final recommendations to JADO at their December board meeting.
Your time has expired. Would you like an extension?
I'd like just about one more minute.
Second. All those in favor, please vote. I know. I know.
Okay, may I proceed?
Nine having voting yes, please proceed.
Okay. So if we can get that to the December JADO board meeting, that would be right at 12 months from when that initial discussion happened to actually having some projects identified and funded. And that'd be a great accomplishment. And I think that'd be a great testimony to the alignment and the excitement in our community. So that concludes my announcement. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Cuda? Deputy Mayor.
Could you give us just real quick criteria that you're looking for in terms of projects? And obviously, not just anything that's going to significantly impact the public, you know, the spaces you're looking for. What, what type of projects? What class of projects?
There's a list of about 10 to 12 items specific to the type of projects. Could be anything from mixed use to public gathering spaces to green space to park to historical. A lot of those things fall within there. And the idea would be those projects would hit at least one or a couple of those items. From there, there's some other items that they should, that should meet. And this is some of the criteria that was adopted. Assessability, so is public transportation, is it accessible for most of the community? Funding, so the funding part was, is do they have ongoing funding sources for the operation? Is it a public-private type of enterprise? And then the other part would be community connection. How does this apply?
All right. Well, thank you for your comments, Mr. Cuda. And we look forward to seeing you tomorrow. For all of us, before we adjourn, please, I need all of you to be here, if possible, at JADO. There's a lot of discussion happening, and it would be great to have a full house here tomorrow. So with that being said, the meeting is adjourned.